Call the meeting to order, please rise from pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the February 2nd, 2021 Post Falls City Council Meeting. I'm looking, I saw Mr. Anthony up there, there he is, Steve, and there's Joe. So clerk will note that all council members are present with Mr. Anthony and Mr. Malloy attending via Zoom. Ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations, I have one announcement. The city hall and city business offices will be closed Monday, February 15th in observance of President's Day. Police, fire, and rescue services for life-threatening or in-progress emergencies may be reached by calling 911. The police department will be open for walking emergencies. For water department, emergencies call 208-773-3517. And we do have a presentation tonight on economic, the economic outlook presentation. Sam Wolkenhauer from the Idaho Department of Labor.
Good evening.
There he is, hi Sam.
Hello, I am going to share a screen, I have a beautiful PowerPoint for everyone to enjoy. This shouldn't take more than fifteen, twenty minutes or so, and then I'll be happy to take questions as well. So what I'm essentially going to do is try to give some context as to where we're at in terms of the business cycle and recovering from the shock of COVID, the economic shock that is. Because with all the news that we're following about the virus and vaccines and employment numbers ricocheting around wildly, it's easy to be a little bit disoriented and get a little lost as to where we sit from an economic perspective. So hopefully I can shed some light there this evening. So unemployment in Idaho absolutely exploded, starting in April of 2020. When Idaho's economy is healthy, we have somewhere between twenty and thirty thousand people on unemployment at any given time. And this number will, will move around a little bit, but it's pretty steady within that range. And what's important to note is also that this tends to be people cycling in and out of unemployment. Idaho's done a very good job of returning to people to work over the last five years or so. So this doesn't reflect long-term unemployment, it reflects churn and movement within the labor market. And then COVID happens. And so overnight, the number of unemployed in Idaho explodes from about twenty-two thousand to about a hundred and fifteen thousand. And that happens in one month. So it's important to understand the scale of what we're talking about and what happened to our economy. And probably the easiest way to think about this is to understand that quite literally the all-time low for Idaho's unemployment rate and the all-time high occurred in back-to-back months. March 2020 was the lowest unemployment rate we ever recorded. We were closing in, we, we thought we might hit two percent, which is astronomically low, that's what we were creeping towards. And then overnight, it explodes to over sixteen percent, which, which was the all-time high. So you go from an all-time low to an all-time high in one month. And with that kind of jump, quite frankly, it, it almost seems to break the, the springs on our measuring systems. And we become a little bit disoriented as to where we sit. So since that enormous spike, a lot of people in Idaho have returned to work as we reopened over the summer. We got that number down significantly. So right now, we're looking at something more like forty to forty-five thousand people unemployed with some fluctuation month to month. So this sets the stage for understanding where Idaho sits at the moment. Forty thousand unemployed is definitely much better than a hundred and twenty thousand unemployed. Yet it is also twice as many as we had before COVID. So essentially, the, the broad description of where Idaho sits is much, much better than in April and May of last year. We made a lot of improvements, but we do not want to confuse those improvements for full recovery. Normally, if you added seventy thousand jobs in a couple of months, you would think you had a very, very healthy economic situation. And yet unfortunately, we still have unemployment levels that are more than twice what they were before COVID. So we definitely made big improvements, but we don't want to confuse this for a fully recovered economy. And that's essentially what I'm going to be showing you as we move forward. So in Cootney County more specifically, we saw something similar. We run off a cliff in April 2020, that's really the only way to describe it. You know, we shed something on the order of ten thousand jobs here in Cootney County, which is a huge number for a community of this size. We shed all of that in one month. And we make a lot of improvements over the following months, but we kind of run out of steam. So right now, we're, we're plateaued at this situation where we're maybe halfway recovered, but there are a lot of jobs that have still been shed, and it's still a long climb to get back to where we want to be. So we don't want to downplay the improvements made over the summer. If we were still at April levels, this would be an unparalleled economic catastrophe. So we're definitely glad for those improvements, but we do not want to be mistaken and consider that the economy is fully healed. And so essentially, we're at the situation where there is a lot of damage to the economy independent of the virus. So this was certainly caused by the virus and the, the associated shutdowns and, and everything that went with it. But even if the virus disappeared, the economy wouldn't instantly heal. There's too much financial damage that has accumulated under the surface, too much stress. So at this point, there's an economic contraction that has its own logic and it has its own momentum. And it's going to take a while to climb out of this hole. We get a similar picture if we look at the state of Idaho. You have the, the trademark sort of looks like a checkmark here. You ricochet off the bottom, you come back up quickly and you run out of steam below where you want to be. So we've made a lot of progress, but there is still room to grow. Now, the one good thing to note here is that Idaho is in fact the best-performing state over the last year. So even though we still have room to grow, Idaho leads the nation in terms of jobs recovery. So we would put this in terms of what percentage of the lost jobs have we gotten back? Idaho leads the nation in that category. And the only state that's really close to us is Utah. And Idaho and Utah are at the top for similar reasons. Because of high in-migration that has provided an economic buoy, a lot of people moving here. Especially with the move to telework, you have some high earners moving into the state. And that's kind of generating some, some extra economic push to get us back on our feet faster than other states. So even though we do have room to grow, we're not going to downplay or ignore the fact that Idaho has still performed much better than pretty much every state in the country, except Utah is the only one that's up there at the top with us. So the, the broader economic situation is still somewhat grim. One good way to look at this is to look at the total number of Americans drawing an unemployment benefit. When the economy's healthy, pre-COVID, this number is maybe two million maximum. And then in April, it suddenly explodes to more than thirty million. So during the summer months, we had roughly thirty million Americans, which, quick math, that's roughly one out of, one out of every eleven Americans drawing some sort of unemployment insurance benefit. That number's come down a lot. Right now, it's something around nineteen million, that's a huge improvement. And yet, even with that huge improvement, it's almost ten times as high as it was before COVID. So there are still a lot of Americans drawing unemployment benefits, there's a lot of job loss that has occurred. And so we don't want to just take all those gains that we made over the summer and conclude that everything's fine. Because clearly, this is still a very heavily medicated economy, to, to, to stretch the medical analogy there. And so all of this spending from the federal government backstopped the economy and, and prevented it from contracting even further. But even with all that aid, there's still a lot of joblessness out there. And so we're looking at what is essentially a multi-year, run-of-the-mill recession that's going to outlast the virus. Because I'm not a doctor, but hopefully, it seems like we're maybe on the home stretch of this as they start to get vaccines out. But even if they could vaccinate everybody and the virus disappeared, this economic damage is going to linger. There are too many businesses that have closed permanently, there are too many people that are delinquent on their rent and their bills. There, there's just too much financial damage that's going to linger beyond the virus. So we need to be prepared for maybe a multi-year climb back up to where we want to be in the business cycle. And by virtually every metric that you want to look at, it's not a particularly healthy economy. You could also look at the number of new claims. So that last graph was showing you the total number of Americans drawing a benefit. This is the number of new claims every week. A normal, healthy month, maybe two hundred to three hundred thousand claims per week. Then you get to April and you get seven million in a week. Well, clearly, this has come down a lot, it's a very odd shape. This is not something that we see a lot in economic graphs. It's come down a lot, but through January, you were still getting a million new unemployment insurance claims per week. And so those are new claims, those are new people being laid off, new excessive churn in the labor market. It's a lot less than seven million, but it's still, you know, four to five times what we were seeing before COVID. So by any metric, but specifically when you look at joblessness, this is not a healthy economy and we still have a long way to go to climb out of the hole. The thing that I want to emphasize though is that the job losses from the COVID recession are impacting a specific strata of the American workforce. So if we divide the American workforce up by their wage, and in this case, I've broken it up into three bins, it looks like sixteen dollars an hour turns out to be a really important kind of watershed wage rate. So for people that were earning more than sixteen dollars an hour, you have maybe three percent of those people that are still unemployed right now. If you were earning less than sixteen dollars an hour, unemployment is about eighteen percent. So what COVID has done has create two economies. One economy is essentially the Zoom economy. It's, it's people that can telework, that can still do their normal job functions. Certainly their routines have been disrupted. This might not have been a particularly pleasant year, but there's not mass joblessness. Some job losses, but most of it has been recovered. On the other hand, you have the service sector economy, the lower-wage service sector economy. And this strata of the workforce is still dealing with essentially Great Depression levels of unemployment. So it's really important to understand that not everyone has experienced this year the same way. So for some people, COVID has primarily been about the public health aspect of the crisis. But for other people, this has been an unparalleled economic catastrophe. Extended joblessness, a lot of businesses have closed, restaurants and small retail establishments have closed permanently. And there's going to be lingering unemployment that's going to continue to affect this strata of our workforce. So it's really important to understand that the economy has been split in half. There's a socioeconomic split in terms of how COVID impacted you financially. Further complicating matters is the fact that equity markets, ignoring the GameStop fiasco, which I'm not going to comment on, but even ignoring that, the stock market did pretty well this year. So for example, I don't think, if you asked people to predict what would happen to the stock market, if, if you knew there was going to be a pandemic and businesses were going to close and you were going to have millions and millions of jobs lost, you probably would have predicted a down year and you would have been wrong. So the stock market did pretty well. So, so people that have assets that are in the more professional class of the economy, they had a pretty good year economically speaking. And for lower-wage service sector workers, this has been a catastrophe. And in fact, it is so significant that it has permanently gunked up our wage data. So right around April, you have a spike in the average wage. And so you might think, oh, people got a raise. Well, no, actually, the spike is because so many people at the bottom end of the wage scale lost their jobs that the average ricocheted up. So that's how significant the scale of the, the job losses has been for lower-wage workers, that it creates this weird like shark tooth in the wage series. So this odd shape is reflective purely of the fact that so many people on the lower rungs of the wage ladder dropped off all at the same time that the average shoots up because you chopped off the bottom part of the wage, the wage scale, so to speak. So this is a small complaint because there's been a lot of suffering this year. But even economists are suffering because, as you can see, our, our wage data is all gunked up. So that's, that's just something to note, that lower-wage Americans are suffering particularly, they're, they're suffering disproportionately as far as job losses go. Now, I talked about how Idaho is outperforming other states. Right now, we rank number one for jobs recovery. And we don't see any reason to believe that that's going to slow down. And the main thing driving our recovery is the thing that's been driving our rapid economic growth for the last many, many years. Certainly the last five years, and that's really aggressive, really strong in migration. So that did not slow down with COVID. Even a pandemic and mass turmoil in the labor markets was not enough to slow down in migration to Idaho. So we are forecasting that you're going to see continued really, really strong population growth here. Right now, we think that we're going to be closing in on that two hundred thousand number by the end of the decade. But the important thing to remember is that this projection is held down by lack of housing. We all know that housing is one of the main constraints on population growth in our area. And so this, this number would likely be higher if we had an infinite supply of housing. And if you look at what's happened to home prices this year, it's clear that this, this process, this in-migration has been merciless. There was, there was no appreciable slowdown whatsoever. The main implication of COVID, in fact, was just to change the age mix of people moving here. Because what COVID did by unlocking mass telework and work from home is it emancipated a lot of professionals from having to live in really congested, really expensive urban areas on the coast. So what this has done is it has allowed the mix of in-migration to balance out so you have more working-age people along with the retirees, which is what's been powering the, the growth in home prices here for most of the last decade. So essentially, the summary is that the economy is still in, in quite a sick place. And even if the virus evaporated, you're still looking at a lot of damage that's going to linger. The general consensus is that you're looking at something like 2023 to 2024 to fully recover from the, from the recession at a national scale. Now Idaho might get there significantly faster because we are a net-growth state. So in-migration has been powering our growth for the last decade. And right now, it seems to be the thing that's giving us an advantage in terms of recovering from COVID because it's bringing a lot of, a lot of extra economic activity, extra income, et cetera. So you're looking at a three-to-four-year total cycle, so to speak, from COVID nationally. Idaho might get there ahead of schedule because of the in-migration that we're having. So just to recap, some of the distinctives. Because this recession has been unlike any other recession that we've ever had. And number one is the very strange shape. You don't usually get a recession where all the job loss happens in one month. In fact, until last year, you never get that. You always have what looks like shape one over there, this sort of gentle slope as it comes off the back of the hill. It goes down, it coasts, and then it starts to recover slowly, picking up steam, the usual thing, what we got in 2007, 2008. This time around, you come crashing off a cliff, it's a cliff, not a hill. You lose all the jobs in one month, bounce off the bottom, get half of them back, and then run out of gas. It's a very weird structure, and it reflects the fact that, it, it reflects the fact that it wasn't really anything in the economy, so to speak. There was no, it, it wasn't anything in terms of monetary policy or pricing or trade. It wasn't an economic phenomenon that did this. So you get a very weird structure to the cycle, and that's going to leave us with this slow ramp back up to full, full speed ahead. The second thing that's very distinctive about this recession is that virtually every financial indicator is strong. You have a recession, a very significant recession, where total household income rose because of all the unemployment insurance and the stimulus checks. You have a recession where virtually every asset that you can think of, from home prices to your 401Ks, everything in the stock market is up. So it's, it's a recession without a huge drop in the financial wealth of the country, which is very unique. And then the third thing that sets this apart is it's a recession that has been almost entirely experienced by people on the lower end of the, the socioeconomic ladder. It's lower-wage earners that are suffering all the excess joblessness, and that's actually quite unique. If you think back to 2007 and 2008, you had a lot of professionals that were put out of work, a lot of turmoil in the financial industry and real estate construction. You had a lot of professionals out of work, so there was sort of evenly distributed economic suffering. This time around, it's concentrated almost exclusively in lower-wage earners. So all of these things combined to make this a very, very unique economic time. And the last time I spoke to you all, I had a lot more optimistic things to say. I think that was back in 2019 when everything looked strong and, and we looked like we had a very solid economic future ahead. Well, that didn't pan out, but the good news is the thing that drove our strong growth over those previous years is also allowing us to be ahead of the curve in terms of recovering from this crash. So we can balance a sort of sobering, realistic look at where the economy is while realizing that all the things that make northern Idaho a great place to live, that were allowing us to grow before COVID are going to allow us to bounce back from it quicker than other states will. So with that, I would be happy to take questions now, or you can always email me or call me if something comes to you later.
Sam, I'd just like to thank you for your information, it's always very informative. As I told you, I think last time I saw you, I, I much prefer your presentations in happier times. But the information you present is very timely and usually very accurate, so again, thank you very much. Any questions of Sam?
He did great.
I think, don't see it, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, do we have any amendments, amendments to the agenda?
We have none tonight, sir.
Any declarations of conflict, exportate contact, site visits? Seen none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the January 19th, 2021 city council meeting. Item B is payables, January 12th through January 25th, 2021. Item C is the Camilleland Park concession air request for proposal solicitation. Item D is Hope Avenue Extension Construction Improvement Agreement. Item E is the Caldwell McCarthy Annexation Right-of-Way and Easement Dedications. Item F is Expo Post Falls Eighth Edition Subdivision Plaid Application. Item G is request to surplus AED machines by the police department. Item H is Foxtail Fifth Edition Subdivision Plaid Application. Item I is update to easement for the outfall and future reuse pipeline. Item J is acceptance of the Post Falls Urban Rental Agency Annual Report. And item K, purchase of real property at 1658 West Lundley, Lundy with a life estate.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
I would move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next on the agenda is public hearings, and tonight we have none, followed by unfinished business, returning ordinances and resolutions. And we do have an ordinance.
I'd move to place the ordinance Caldwell McCarthy Annexation File Number ANNX-0004-2020 on its first and only reading while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, annexing property consisting of approximately 4.685 acres lying in the northeast quarter of Section 26. Township 51 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, as fully described in exhibit A to this ordinance, providing zoning of the so-annexed property residential mixed, providing for amendment of the official zoning map, providing for an effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance, Caldwell, Caldwell McCarthy Annexation File Number ANNX-0004-2020 to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second. Motion second, discussion. Remote call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. We do have a State Highway 41 Gravity Sewer Additional Service, and I believe we're going to have a presentation by Mr. Arbeni. Are you with us, Andrew?
I am, I am working on getting my camera on, can you hear me?
We can hear you, just wanted to make sure you could.
Apologize for the delay. Okay. Evening, Mayor, members of the council, Andrew Arbeni, Utilities Project Manager. Can everyone see my screen?
Yep, yes.
Let me adjust the screen. Okay, how about now, are you able to see the screen?
Yes, yep.
Okay, I had to switch it to the correct monitor. So the presentation this evening is for the Highway 41 Gravity Sewer Project, and it's an additional services agreement with TO engineers to provide construction observation and construction management services for the project. I changed the, my map here, changed it a little bit to reflect the location, but also to provide a little bit of an illustration of the work that has been completed and then the remaining work left to be completed by the contractor. So everything in green is what has been completed to date. With the two red sections are, the two red sections are the areas that remain to be completed by the, the contractor. Since my last update, there has been significant updates and some progress made, and I'll cover that in my slides coming up. But hopefully, this provides a little bit of an illustration of the progress occurring at the project. The current timeline, as I mentioned, I presented a additional services with TO engineers at the December 15th city council meeting. And council, city council approved that additional services. That included additional time for TO engineers to- That included additional time for TO engineers to provide observation, construction management on the project. That is in direct relation to the challenges that we have seen on the project related to utility conflicts, but also challenges with the contractor. So we have seen a number of claims and continue to work through that process. At the time that I made that presentation, TO engineers additional services was based off of a February 5th completion date, which was provided by the contractor in their most recent schedule submission. TO put together that additional services and their cost based on that. Following that meeting and approval, December 30th, we received a revised schedule from the contractor that indicated a March 8th completion, and also that they were adding a second crew to the site. This additional services this evening accounts for the time, the additional time it will take from February 5th to March 8th for the contractor to complete all the work as part of the contract as originally contracted. And yeah, it provides the, provides the additional time that is needed there. As I mentioned, RAS did add a second crew, and that began in early January. So we have seen an uptick in progress being made onsite. The amount of work that has been done in the last month has been substantially more than what we were seeing previously. And this additional services retains TO engineers under contract with the city. So this provides the needed construction management support and the value into the project. They, they provide the onsite observation and tracking and record keeping, and then also addressing any issues that come up onsite directly. That brings me to the overall summary of where we are. The original engineering and construction management agreement is for $162,287. So previously approved additional services accounts for $111,105 additional dollars. That goes back to the original contract in engineering and design from 2018. So at that time, we entered into a contract with TO engineers for the design of the 41 project, and there were several challenges. So we've, we've seen challenges in construction, but even through the, the design and engineering, we had challenges in the alignment and overall placement of the sewer line. Some of those, those challenges, just working within timeframes of other entities and uncovering unknowns that we were not aware of. So that accounts for all of previous additional services to date. Tonight's request is for $40,000, and that, again, provides TO the budget necessary to complete the project based on what RAS is currently showing for their completion date. I will mention that RAS is, appears to be tracking with that completion date of March 8th, and TO has accounted for time up to February 5th and will likely, they have more or less tracked to that date, will likely be at their budget next week. So this, this refreshes their budget and keeps them under contract with the city and providing that value and essential service to the project that's needed. An added note here that with this additional services, we are requesting city council approve the additional services this evening at an opportunity or at a future time where we can negotiate, or if that opportunity is there. Two ways that we could request RAS reimburse the city for the additional services would be through a contract extension or a change order. So that would likely be a future request of RAS as we move through some of the other challenges on the claim side and some of those issues and items that we've had with the contractor. I keep this note, I've had this on my past projects, but it's just a reminder that our funding partner, essentially the Urban Renewal Agency that's providing the funding for this project, that they have been apprised of the challenges and the status of the project. We actually have an update with them later this week, so they will be briefed on the latest information. And ultimately, the project costs are reimbursed by the Urban, Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency, and that's outlined in the MOU that the city has with the URA. A few construction management updates and some things in way of actual construction and new developments since December. There has been quite a few changes, at least from my perspective, being on the, being involved in it every day. The city currently is reducing payment amounts, so we have received three pay applications to date. The third pay application is actually included in tonight's payables and includes a reduced amount by the city. As outlined in the contract, there are provisions to withhold payment based on the outlined liquidated damages. Those are not being assessed, but we are withholding that amount for, at a future time, for that to be addressed. And we intend to do that, tend to do so on future pay applications until the contract can be addressed and we are able to renegotiate. I mentioned a little bit that there is a, have a separate track on the legal side with claims that are ongoing with the contractor. And so those are ongoing discussions that we are having with the contractor and legal counsel. Finally, the overall update on progress. I estimated this evening, they have about, the contractor has about 1,000 feet of total pipe remaining on the project. Total pipe is, I believe it was 2,800 feet. So they have made substantial progress and continue to do that. We've continued to provide the resources and assist in that as they have shown that effort to complete the project. My favorite part of the presentation, I get to take a break and point out a few pictures, provide a little bit of illustration. This first picture is of a slide rail system that the contractor has chosen to employ. So this is their first crew that is working near the Goodwill location. This was taken a few weeks ago, so they are actually further north than where this was taken at. But you can see just kind of the setting, a little bit of the conditions. This is one of the tighter sections of the project, a tighter corridor. So it is challenging and very deep sewer. This project is the second crew north of 16th Avenue, and this is what is deemed as a conventional trench box system that they are using here. And they have, this again was taken a few weeks ago, so they are further north, working towards Horse Haven Avenue. I have one last picture. This is to illustrate a little bit of the challenge that is encountered in way of the project constraints and utilities. So you can see the yellow line here, I believe that's the gas line. There's fiber, telephone, about everything you could have underground, all in this one location. And believe a new manhole is designed to be located in this vicinity. So these are, this is also a prime example of some of the engineering support that TO would provide in this instance for addressing a conflict with the design location. In fact, we, this is exactly what we've encountered, and they are able to view the design, do some calculations, and make an adjustment, and move, be able to move as quickly as we can, providing the contractor with direction very quickly. So that's, that's part of the additional services, and this is just one of many of the items that bring value to the project and that the engineer would be responsible for and is responsible for. With that, that concludes my, my project. Before we jump into any questions, I would add that Warren Wilson and John Beecham and Craig Bornpool are also joining us tonight. So if there are any questions specifically related to the claims and more of the legal discussion, I would probably call on one of them to, to assist.
Thank you, Andrew. I do have a question. I know maybe Mr. Wilson may come to you. Andrew, you talked on several occasions about the challenges, and the photo you showed us indicates that there are real challenges that they're dealing with. And we've talked in the past about the merit of keeping the contractor on and the need to have TO engineer oversee them. So we approved it through February 5th, from what you said, at an additional expense, and now they're asking for another 31 days. My, my question, I think you may have addressed it, Andrew, and I don't know if it's definitive yet, but do we have recourse? You know, they, they were supposed to be done on the 5th, and now it's the 8th of March, another 31 days. Do we have an opportunity to, in your opinion, Mr. Wilson, to collect that? Or are we barking up a fruitless tree trying to get money back from the contractor for additional expenses we've incurred because of challenges they've met?
So I'll answer that briefly, maybe, the definitive maybe. We will come back to you with more in-depth discussions. This is one of those areas where this is best discussed in executive session because of the potential for litigation where this is headed. So maybe, not trying to short-circuit you, but, but an open discussion tonight, that's probably not appropriate.
That's fine. So I don't want, I don't need the answer, but that is my concern, is that we continue to extend this additional costs. So it will be interesting to see what transpires. My, I'll open up for questions, but my thought is, we've come this far. We've got 1,000 feet left. TO engineering has been handling it for us, and it, to me, it just makes a lot of sense to continue. But counsel, comments?
I had the same question you did, Mayor. I also have a question in regards to the unknown utilities. Andrew, I know that's been a big issue. Are these legal utilities? Were these placed there legally? Or did somebody go in and put in that water line and the gas line? I mean, why don't we know that it's there if it's been done legally?
There, there is a combination of that. Maybe as a, as a quick response to that, there are utilities that are encountered that are unknown. Some of that goes back to maybe other generations, the 50s, the 60s, 70s timeframes, where we just don't have information on infrastructure that's in the ground. This is also being constructed in newly acquired ITD right-of-way, which was up until last year, I think it was May, some, sometime May timeframe, the ITD finalized the right-of-way acquisition. It was private property prior to that. So what property owners did does not always get recorded, documented, or do people know about. So that, that factors in. The picture I, I showed, more or less, those utilities were marked. When, I guess just a brief description of, of the process. When we go through design, the engineer will call-in locates, and that allows all of the utility providers to come out and locate their, their facilities. The engineer then goes out and surveys and collects that information along with any as-built information that may exist. So plans, any, any knowledge, bringing that all together and then incorporating that into the plans. As you can see, that process mostly works, but you do have discrepancies and issues that arise. And sometimes an issue is a response from different utility entities to come out and locate those services. So it's not uncommon to find things that nobody knew about when you're digging underground.
Thank you. Linda?
Well, it doesn't appear to me that we have much of a choice at this juncture. Don't really think that there's any turning back now. And so if it looks like you're looking for a motion, so I would move to approve.
Linda, could I, could I interrupt for one second? Joe had his hand up, so we'll come back to you, Linda, for a motion, but Joe, did you have a question first?
That was more a comment that Linda just beat me to. This is a situation where we have to get it done. We don't have a choice. Other projects are coming over, over the top of it. We don't want to hold up, you know, the entire county's traffic for months. We have to get it done, and we got to leave it to Mr. Wilson and the legal experts to sort out who pays for it later, in my opinion.
Thanks, Joe. Linda?
I would move to approve the HI, SH-41 Gravity Sewer Additional Services for Engineering and Construction Management Services with TO engineers.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Remote call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next item, new business action items. We do have Prairie Waterline Extension. Mr. Quinn?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Robbie Quinn, Parks Planner, here to present the Prairie Waterline Extension, seeking council's approval for the payment of the 12-inch waterline extension to Ross Point Water District. So I'm presenting this as it relates to the Tolemore Sports Complex, which is between Prairie Avenue, Kildare Avenue, Charleville, and Cecil Road. And so the Pradera subdivision to the west of our property is currently under construction. And so prior to that, this is kind of a map outlining the existing waterlines. And so it stopped at Ross Point's Western Property Line and then ran along Charleville and Kildare and ended between Cecil and Kildare Avenue. And so with the Pradera subdivision, they are responsible for extending the waterlines through Kildare, along Cecil Road, and tying into Prairie. And while they were installing these roads, it was Ross Point's desire to loop the waterline from Cecil and tie into their existing point to help with water flows. And while they knew that, or we expressed that our park portion would not be completed for a few years, which we would have been responsible to complete that section, they proposed that the Pradera contractor would install it, and they would split the cost with the City of Post Falls. And so this is the only portion that we are discussing this evening, roughly 650 feet of the extension from Cecil to Ross Point's existing waterline. And again, 650 feet of 12-inch water mainline, and the cost from MDM Construction Group was $37,979. And then with the cost sharing between Ross Point Water District and the City of Post Falls, our proportion of that would be $18,989.50. And just kind of as a note, during our master planning process with MTLA, this waterline extension was estimated at about $79,000. So a substantial savings from that estimate with the cost sharing and going off of MDM's existing construction. And so with that, I will open it for any questions.
Robbie, where would the funds come from on that?
Oh, yes, sorry. So that will be out of the park impact fees, Tolemore budget.
Thank you. And, yeah, well.
Robbie, just a quick question. I really like what you guys have done here, and it's going to work out well for us. But how did we miss by so much? I mean, why did, why did our estimate come in at almost $80,000? And they're going to do it for less than $40,000?
So a couple of things on that. One, the, the master plan had a pretty hefty contingency on it with, with those budget numbers, and obviously, they're going to kind of aim high regardless, excluding the contingency. And two, there's kind of a economy of scale here with MDM working on the Pradera subdivision. They're putting in thousands of feet of waterline, not only on the exterior with the water mains, but also interior in the subdivision. So there's kind of, you know, discounts on that quantity of material as well as just their experience and. in installing the quantity of lineal footage. Now, I don't necessarily think that makes up that much difference as far as essentially the doubling, but those are a couple reasons on why it is different.
Okay, I'm just, I'm wondering if, are we going to find some other big savings like this as we go forward on this project?
Well, that'd be ideal.
We'd hope so.
But obviously, another savings that we have realized is the Cecil Road waterline extension. Since Pradera came before the city, that waterline has been installed, and that was also included in the master plan estimate.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions, Robbie? Thank you, sir. Entertained a motion.
I'd move to approve the Prairie Waterline Extension.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony? Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item up under new business is the 12th Avenue Collections, Phase 1. Mr. Urbini again.
Thank you, Mayor. Andrew Urbini, Utilities Project Manager. I think this is a first. I have, there's three utilities-related projects in a row. It's exciting.
Everything relates to 12,000.
Thought I was ready here. Apologize for the delay. Okay, I think I'm ready. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So the presentation this evening is for the 12th Avenue Collections Project. This is Phase 1, and it is an additional services agreement with Keller Associates, recommending council approval for the agreement tonight. Quick overview of the project. The lift station facility is located at 12th Avenue and Highway 41. It's the red square on the map. I also included the green line, which represents the Highway 41 project. So in some ways, they are connected, separate projects, but the sewer line on Highway 41 does connect into the lift station facility, just as a brief overview of that. So a few of the project components. 12th Avenue Collections is actually two phases. The first phase is the lift station and EQ basin. And the second phase provides a connection and use of future force mains, two force mains, all the way to the water reclamation facility. So from one side of the town to the other. The equalization tank, currently under construction as part of the lift station, provides an interim solution, and that provides the ability to shave off flows during peak hours and alleviates some of the issues we've seen downstream. So we have limited capacity downstream of the 12th Avenue Lift Station. The equalization provides that leveling until we have the funding available to construct the force main. The design contract with Keller Engineering, or with Keller Associates, includes the design of Phase 1 and Phase 2, and included the construction management services for the construction of Phase 1, currently under construction with La Riviere. The total engineering contract at the time with contingency was for one, just under $1.6 million. Tonight's additional services request is for $54,160. So that was a summary of our engineering contract. I do want to touch base on the contractor's bid results. So last February, we opened bids, and the engineer's estimate was for $4.5 million. We received bids anywhere from 3.9 all the way up to 4.6, with La Riviere's bid at 3.4. So they were 500,000 below the second bidder, substantially lower. We saw, and as we've moved through construction, we have definitely seen the value. I think anytime you see a large spread, there's certainly some concerns. I do want to point out that overall, this project has gone extremely well, and has been a great partnership with Keller and La Riviere over the last nine or 10 months that we have been building the facility. A few projects, or a few photos of the project. This is a view of the pump gallery. So this is a pump station room, and you can see, you can see my pointer. There are several pedestals where the pumps will mount, and then the crew is working this week to start all the piping. There's a substantial amount of piping that connects to the pumps and then into our wet well, where the wastewater is collected. This is very similar to a facility that we constructed at the plant, actually, a few years ago, as part of our reclamation facility upgrade. So somewhat familiar to us in terms of operations and familiarity. I will also add that this is the, this will be the largest facility in our collection system. It is the largest lift station that we will have and operate. This is an exterior view. This includes the control room, electrical room here, where the gray panel is, and then just behind it, where the building bumps out a bit. That's the entryway into that pump gallery in the previous photo I showed. This is a view of the equalization tank. Actually, this photo and the previous photo were taken this afternoon, so they are current. And you can see all the piping here. This is what is being installed this week, over the next two weeks. So this, this tank is the equalization, and will provide that shaving ability during the high flows, and then transmitting back into the sewer system, into our collection system during low-flow times, typically late in the day. So that brings me to a construction timeline and kind of an overall view of where we've been in the last year. So as I mentioned, we opened bids. We opened on February 18th. There's a date in here that I did not include, but we requested council approval, I believe it was sometime in March, to award the contract to La Riviere, Inc., as a low-responsive bidder. At that time, as everyone is well aware, was when COVID-19 struck, and we were finding, we were hearing, or maybe not hearing, a lot of details on that. There were a lot of unknowns, a lot of uncertainty. We actually, as a city and city staff, we internally viewed each project and took a prescriptive and a big-picture view of each project, and analyzed it based on risk and where we were in the design or construction progress, and whether it made sense to continue to move forward. So we evaluated each project, and 12th Avenue was certainly one of the largest projects. In looking at that, we had some definite concerns, and had some discussions with the Urban Renewal Agency, as they are the funding partner for this project. It was their indication and their desire to move forward, and they requested that we move forward with the construction of the project as planned. And we did so. We awarded the project, and the notice to proceed, which starts the contract days for the project, was issued on, or started on April 13th, 2020, so last April. So we went into the project eyes-open and unaware, or not knowing exactly what impacts we might see. With the April 13th notice to proceed, that set the contract substantial completion at January 7th. Shortly into the project, we did encounter some changes, some impacts. One of those had a substantial impact in terms of time, was an impact with one of the utility companies and scheduling work that needed to be done prior to major excavation and work that the contractor was able to proceed on. So there was a bit of time there that delayed the project and delayed some of the other work that the contractor was able to do. There's a few other, I listed out a few of the other impacts. And a weather-related, actually, with the wildfires we saw last summer. There were some smoke impacts that created some shutdowns with some of the subcontractors and their availability to be on-site. And there have been some modifications that have occurred that have also impacted the time. And then I mentioned, lastly, just some supply chain impacts. By and large, we have not seen the major impacts that we were anticipating, at least to date. We still have remaining time left in the project to, before we are completed. However, there is one key piece of equipment that is substantially delayed. It prevents the full operation of the facility, but it doesn't prevent the major components and the startup of the pumps in the facility to run. I have that listed in a slide, and in the next slide or two, and I'll talk a little bit about that. So the overall financial summary, currently, as I mentioned, the original agreement with contingency is 1.581, so $1,581,087. The additional services agreement with Keller is for $54,160. The total amended amount would be $1,635,247. So again, the requested amount this evening is for $54,160. We have been, we have been discussing a cost share with the contractor. As I pointed out in the timeline, the substantial completion was January 7th. With all approved changes that have occurred through the project, that moved the substantial completion to February 1st. We have been working with Keller and La Riviere, getting the information necessary. La Riviere is putting together their schedule based on updates and materials and availability. Keller is putting together the additional services needed based on what remaining work in the timeframe and what is left. A third part to that is evaluating that additional services based on responsibility. For the changes that were approved as part of the contract that I had listed in the previous slide, those would be within the city's purview and in our court, as I see it, as a staff sees it. The, there is a level of responsibility and for changes and delays that occurred within La Riviere's control. And we have had encouraging discussions. We've, they recognize that there are an amount of delays attributable to La Riviere, and we recognize there were unforeseen conditions that occurred on the project that we are, that the city is, sees as our responsibility. We are working through that final agreement and intend to finalize that this week in identifying what that level of responsibility is. So all that to say that a contract extension with La Riviere would be contingent upon a cost share and identifying what that level of responsibility is. And this is a, I think I already covered it, but the project is funded by the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency. So this, along with the Highway 41 project, both updates will be provided to the URA, actually, later this week. They have been apprised and been a part of the project throughout the whole process. And again, I can't stress enough of just the challenges and the challenging year. It was, it's been interesting, but by and large, the contractor continued to put resources to the project, continued to move forward and make it a priority, and work through those challenges. And we've been able to work as a team to bring this project to completion. We're not there yet, but we're getting close. So as I mentioned, the substantial completion is February 1st, and we are working through those delays and working through a cost share with the contractor. I mentioned the delivery of a key piece of equipment, and that is, they call a pinch valve, and that essentially is our equalizing device. So out of the EQ tank, it flows through this valve that is modulated and electronically controlled to release flow at a rate that equalizes back into our system. So that alleviates the stress on downstream infrastructure that we have within the city, relieves the stress of downstream lift stations until the future force main is constructed and we can pump directly to the plant. Currently, that delivery of that valve is showing late May, and then we anticipate an early June installation and startup. As soon as it arrives, the contractor would install, and then final tuning of the facility would be provided by Keller. So the additional services, additional time, this is all factored into what is needed for Keller to be involved in that. So the recommendation tonight is, City Council would approve the additional services and the additional time that's needed for Keller to complete the project. The, our proposed cost share with La Riviere for the delays attributed to La Riviere. So those are ongoing discussions, and then we anticipate having that finalized shortly this week. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Andrew, I do have a question. So we signed an original contract for $1,581, which included a contingency?
Yes.
Has all that contingency been used?
So that included a Task 8 item, and there is not enough contingency remaining that would provide, that would cover this cost today. I can give a quick kind of background on those additional services. So when we requested council approval for the original contract, along with a contingency at the approval of the Public Works Director, those were for changes that would benefit the system or unforeseen conditions or issues. There were a few, there were several, several additional services that were approved as part of the design, mostly around the Phase 2. As we got into the Phase 2 design with the force mains and going across town, that identified a couple issues and conflicts. And then at the facility, there was some additional design work that was needed to bring the new lines, the new future lines into the facility, and how that would actually be received. So there was some design work needed to reconfigure the existing structure. And fortunately, that was not identified at the time we were scoping with Keller as we began the design and gathered more information. And it became clear of where the route, what route we would select through town with the force main, and how that ties in. That, that information became more clear, and then that led to an opportunity that adding the additional services to provide benefits to the overall system. So those were mostly used through our design process.
Okay, thank you. My concern, and it always has been, is when you have a contract and you have a contingency, and we continue to see requests for additional service, and I understand it's necessary, we're going to have to do it to complete it. But you do have to wonder, and that's why I was asking about the contingency amount. So I think you answered my question. Any other questions of Andrew?
Andrew, I'm just a little bit confused, but maybe not. So the original contract or the bid was for almost 3.5 million, right?
Yep. Correct.
So how did we get to 1.6 million? Is that just a piece of the contract? That's...
Two separate contracts. So I, maybe I didn't do a very good job in separating those two. The, we, the city has a contract with Keller Associates for the engineering and design services, and that was the, with this additional services, that amounts to the 1.6 million. The, the city also has a contract with La Riviere, Inc., and that is for the construction of, the actual construction of the lift station facility, and that's in the amount of 3.4 million.
Okay. So all in all, this is- So, all in all, this is still, I'm with the mayor. I don't like to spend extra money, but it's a, kind of a small amount in relation to the, the whole project.
Yeah, the, as I mentioned, the, the second place bid, the second bidder was about 500,000 above. And, you know, with where we are today, we, we've had several changes, but we are still with, pretty close to that original bid amount, and we have remaining project left. And I know there are some changes that will likely come, but I anticipate we will continue to be substantially, this is still within where we are currently.
And that number could go down, the 54,000?
The, no, so the $54,000, well, it is a not-to-exceed amount, and that is with Keller Associates.
But you also talked about cost sharing, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions, Andrew? Seen none, not entertained a motion.
I'd move to approve the 12th Avenue Collections Phase One Additional Services Agreement.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Me? Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Do we have any administrative staff reports tonight?
We have none tonight, sir.
Are there any citizens wishing to testify, Shannon?
We have none.
So, then the next item would be mayor and council comments. And the only comment I'll make is, it's good to see that emphasis is being placed on the vaccine. Good that the governor was up, trying to ensure that it's moving forward as rapidly as possible. I appreciate all those that have stepped up to assist, the different groups and the different organizations, Cootney Health, Panhandle Health, not, yeah, Cootney Health, Panhandle Health, and Norfolk Specialty Hospital, to name a few. And hopefully, as Sam says, we'll be seeing an end to this in the not-too-distant future, or at least a curbing of it. So, hopefully, we can move forward and continue to take care of the needs of the city and the business of the city like we have been. It's good to see most of the council members here tonight. It kind of got lonely there for a while, so welcome back. Council comments?
I have a question. We still operate two motor pools, one specifically for the police department and then one that covers everything else?
All of our fleet is handled under one fleet management now, so they all work under, I don't remember his name now, Richard. And so, the, but we do have a PD facility for cars and our regular facility out at the wastewater plant, so.
Okay, so it's one guy oversees all of it? Okay. Is there any, you know, thought to combine that? So, you just have one facility? Or?
Yes, so we are doing the facility management study currently. I can't remember exactly what we're calling it, but the capital facility study. And that'll look at what is best for the city as far as resources go. One of the things is currently our streets are, and fleet are out at the wastewater plant. As we expand the wastewater plant, they will no longer continue to be there. So, we have looked at other sites and what areas would be a good place to have a public works facility, and at that point, you could expand it to include the police. There's always probably gonna need to be some just quick repair work done at the police facility itself, you know, but we'll look at those options.
Just curious. Anybody else? Seen none? We do not need an executive session tonight?
We do not. Probably next, next meeting.
So, the next motion is?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Being adjourned. Thank you.